It's one o'clock or two o'clock. I'll open this work session up. We'll go and start with business. Ready, Mr. Gold?
Yes, sir. All right, y'all ready to jump into it?
Be excited. Sure we got it.
Me too. All right. I'll do that.
You just press a button like this, back and forth.
All right. Learn something new every day. All right. So our 2024 factions statistics, uh, utilities department, we're up to our four hundred and eighty-five customers now. Um, but we added about six new customers in twenty twenty-four. Um, our water production was thirty-four, a little over thirty-four million gallons, uh, for the year. About ninety-three thousand gallons per day. Um, that's about the same as twenty twenty-three. Um, of that water produced, uh, we accounted for thirty-three million gallons of it, which is about ninety-six percent of, which anything over ninety percent is is considered good. So, uh, treated wastewater, um, was close to thirty-nine million. Um, that's about a two million gallon increase over twenty twenty-three. Uh, we think that increase was probably caused by I and I and some other factors, um, because it didn't come from the six new customers. Um, buildings and grounds, uh, we're up to thirty-five buildings with the addition of the Wells Fargo building. Um, and that thirty-five is, uh, office buildings, well huts, um, buildings at the county parks, anything in there. And we do maintenance, uh, at different levels at each of the locations. Some, uh, locations like this building, we do everything, including janitorial. And then at the fire stations, we do basically just the building maintenance. They maintain their grounds. We still do snow removal and stuff, but they they cut the grass and stuff like that. And then we're up to twenty-five generators in this in the system. Um, they're at twenty-three different locations and one of them in Palitan now with the new radio system. So. So we try to check those that, um, prior to each rain or each, uh, weather event, significant weather event storms, uh, winter storms like we've been having. So it takes quite a bit of time to get through twenty-five of them. Yeah. Um, property, we're up to two hundred and eighty-six acres. That includes the new, uh, EDA parcels. Um, of that two hundred and eighty-six, we maintain about forty acres on a regular basis, um, with mowing and things like that. Um, that does include the the two old landfills, which we, uh, bush hog once or once a year or every other year. But about forty acres that we, uh, cut weekly. Um, fleet maintenance, there's thirty vehicles in the fleet now. Um, that's administration vehicles, um, parks and rec, animal control, social services, building department, landfill, and then our public works build, uh, vehicles. And we don't, we do not do any of the EMS vehicles. Um, we do Kent's vehicles, but not any squads of fire trucks or police cars, anything like that. And then there's thirty pieces of equipment. Um, that's your mowers, UTVs, tractors. Uh, there's several trailers with the the fire department EMS that we maintain. Um, animal control has a couple trailers that we maintain. Uh, skid steers, excavators, tractors. And our staff, we have fourteen full-time employees and, uh, they have about a hundred and twenty-five years of service. Um, between the fourteen of us. And, uh, we have three part-time personnel. Uh, two of them are used as needed and one's used on a weekly basis in, uh, buildings and grounds. All right, Ashlyn. I'm hitting the button. I don't know why the format looks different from what.
It's everybody says, by the way, not just you. I put out when it came in. They all got converted on the screen.
Some pretty old.
Yeah. And when we get the saved files, they still look pretty. So it's it's not just you though, is the good news. And we get the pretty version when they get sent to us.
Back over there. All right, recent accomplishments, uh, wastewater treatment plant, uh, PLC upgrade. Uh, that's the plant logic controller, uh, basically the brains of the operation that controls the functions at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, we went from analog to digital. Um, wastewater, I and I study was completed. Um, the problem areas were identified and prioritized. Installation of the groundwater monitoring equipment. And that was the equipment installed in various wells and streams around the village, uh, to collect data on the groundwater. Um, we have about a year's worth of data. Uh, so we should be getting the first report, annual report from that coming up. The lead and copper water service inventory was completed, um, in accordance with the office of drinking water in the EPA. We had the inventory, all of the customers, um, what their service lines were made out of or, uh, whether it was plastic, copper. Uh, we don't have any lead in the system because our system is, um, new enough that we don't have any lead out there. But it still took some time to go through and sure, and, uh, meet the requirements. Uh, circuit court clerk's office renovation was completed in, uh, April twenty twenty-four. And then, uh, we had some employees get certified, one in, uh, wastewater treatment, um, a few in, uh, pesticide application, traffic control, first aid, and some other other areas. All right, what's next for the department? Um, completion of the disinfection improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, construction of a, a new addition, a building addition to house the tanks for the sodium hypochlorate to be started sometime within the next month, soon as the weather cooperates. Um, reduction of the I and I in the wastewater system. Uh, my staff has completed some repairs. And then we have some contractors coming in to do another round of repairs that should be completed by the end of April. Uh, water tank maintenance, uh, most of you know that's scheduled for July of twenty twenty-five. Uh, building improvements, uh, staff is gathering prices on replacing the floor in here in administration and some of the other buildings around, uh, the village. Uh, staff development, uh, we're looking to add one full-time staff member and, uh, continue training and promoting the existing staff. Opportunities and challenges. Most of this will follow right along with the slide we had before. Wastewater system, um, challenges, obviously age and infrastructure, um, the I and I piece. Um, we're looking to line manholes and line main lines of, and, uh, you know, most of you know, that's outlined in the CIP project, uh, request over several years, uh, based on the priorities that that the, uh, study identified. The water system, the iron and magnesium, uh, we're looking at, uh, different levels and stages of treatment. Um, most of all of that was included in the CIP request as well. Um, utility rates um, and sustainability of utility system, um, the possibility of doing a rate study to determine, uh, what our rates would need to be if we had a self-sufficient uh, sustainable system without any, um, need to supplement. Uh, building space needs, uh, some departments are requesting additional space. Uh, new space would need to be developed, uh, to provide additional space for them. Uh, there's no additional space readily available at this time. So we would have to have to add on or make some renovations to to, uh, be able to accommodate those requests. Uh, building improvements, um, yeah, a lot of the buildings were renovated in two thousand and three and two thousand and five, like this building here. And as you can see, the floor is wearing and different things. So we need to, uh, make sure we stay on top of those replacements and and, um, a lot of roofs were done in in twenty, in two thousand and three and two thousand and five. So those renovations are, you know, now twenty years old. So, and you know what to expect the lifespans and stuff like that is. And then workforce development, this is another big one for us. Um, approximately sixty-five percent of the fellow work staff, um, would be eligible for retirement within the next five and six years. So we need to be working on, um, staff development and, um, more cross-training and hiring some new folks to be able to take care of where these, uh, when these people are ready to retire. I think that's it unless I missed something. Any questions or?
He touched on what is the maintenance of the water power. Didn't he do it every? And then, uh, we're good.
Uh, so there's different, um, there's different pieces. So every five years, we're supposed to, uh, clean the interior. And I think every ten years, I think the exterior is painted, which they just done. And then fifteen years, the interior is painted. So, and in order to do that, any of the interior work, that tank has to come offline to be able to do that. Unless there there has been a option of, uh, di- divers to go in and do the cleaning on the inside. But the the cleaning, uh, the rinse-out takes about a week and, um, it's part of our maintenance contract. So it's already built in the fee that we pay annually. The paint jobs, the clean outs are all included in that, um, maintenance contract that we're in under right now. And that contract's been in place for, um, probably since two thousand and three or two thousand and four.
Okay, I got two, though.
Yes, sir.
You said generators on Palitan?
Yes, sir.
That one in Cook Road?
Yes, sir.
What is it, backup?
Yeah, so it's for the radio system.
Yeah, I know. I thought they had a big hat sitting around that shed now.
Well, they um, they, Palitan has their generator there and then we have our separate generator for that controls just our building.
Okay. Well, I haven't been over this since we went online. I moved them off.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what is the average age of our vehicles, county, county?
Uh, that's a.
Do you think we're gonna have to replace in the near future?
I would have to. There's a vehicle replacement schedule somewhere. I don't know how up to date it is. Um, I know Mr. Whittaker used to take care of that when he was here. And, um, I know when Holly was here, we we looked at it several times. Um, if to go by the average age would be a little bit misleading because a lot of people are driving ex-police vehicles. Um, uh, animal control has a a cup, uh, one, Parks and Rec has several. Um, and then administration has two.
You don't go by age, you go by the wear and carry of the vehicle.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. What the 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 vehicle replacement, the vehicle replacement plan was laid out by age. But what what I normally do is look at it and see if the vehicle needs to be replaced or not. And then, you know, move it back or we recommend that it be replaced. Um, you know, if we see a lot of maintenance issues with it, but that's kind of how we go go about it. It's not necessarily it's five years old. We need to get rid of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you would then be updating that schedule to go into budget planning cycle, I assume, because that's those costs do factor into the.
We've looked at the public works vehicles, um, and then it's up to each department to kind of look at their vehicles. If like if they need a new one or, um, you know, if I see Glenn's truck has given them a lot of problems, I may recommend that. But I'm not seeing any right now that
Okay.
are giving us problems. I think anything that would go in the budget, in my opinion, right now would be additional vehicles, um, above what what we already have.
Thank you.
And we don't have any, um, vehicles that the police, uh, sheriff has turned in
Right.
uh, sitting around, um, just not spoken for. I think all of them are signed out right now.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You're putting that one additional, you said you needed one, one additional person. You're putting that in the budget or?
Yes, sir. It it's in our request.
It's, uh, fifteen years on cleaning the, or working on the inside of the tank?
Yes, sir.
When it went up, when the fifteen?
I was done in twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we got, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Twenty, twenty, thirty, thirty-five would be the next one, I believe. I'd have to look at the schedule and make sure, but I'm pretty sure we did it in twenty twenty. That that when it, when we do it, it'll have to come offline for about a month to do that. Because that's it, interior sandblasting and all that stuff and recoating.
Yeah, that was the rough, that was the rough one back then. It'll get even worse next time because you got more usage by the Mm-hmm. ten years from now. Yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've, if we continue to reduce the iron and stuff on the inside or in the system, that'll that'll lessen that.
That's a good point.
And, um, they come every year and inspect it, whether they're doing a washout or not. So they look at the outside and the inside every year. So, and then they'll note if they see any, where the in any chips or anything like that or anywhere it's failing.
Mm-hmm.
And we haven't seen any of that. Of course, we've been on top of it, you know, because they come out annually and look at both tanks. Both tanks are done the same way, done the same contract.
They don't both go down the same time though, right?
No, can't.
Because you gotta have one of the backup.
Yes, sir.
And then if I remember correctly, we had somebody see an automatic sprinklers. We have to watch that because we don't have the capacity to carry on when the big ones down.
We, um, last time we went through all that and and, um, it was determined that we could provide the one hour as required by the, uh, fire marshal.
That's right.
So we thought we were going to have to do something to accommodate that. But the fire marshal said it would be one hour instead of two hours. We couldn't provide two, but we can provide the one. And we're gonna have the engineers look at everything before we come offline for that one week. Um, so that we can make sure that our water usage and everything is in line with what we had in twenty twenty.
All right, anybody else?
All right. My couch.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hello.
How are you?
All right. She's got a little booklet that she's passing out to you guys.
All right.
It's a pretty hefty booklet.
Yes, it's what we do.
A lot of programs. That's a good thing.
Yeah.
That program can be found online.
Has she put that online yet? No. This is what we do for our sponsors and the people that help us out. And we have a lot of them.
That's a good thing too.
Yeah, that's right. And they see that we're doing good things. So they come along and they participate. And when you guys are ready, I'm ready. Right?
Yeah.
I don't want y'all to be looking down while I'm talking.
Oh, okay. Well.
All right. It's good. Okay, says, uh, for the department faction statistics, as you can see, uh, our resources, we have, uh, four gyms, three of those belongs to the high school. Uh, we have one of Parks and Rec. We've done some. Uh, we have one of Parks and Rec, we've done some renovation there, and then we have twelve fields. And of those, part of those belongs to the school systems. Uh, seven of them belongs to us and the rest of them belongs to the school and we share that responsibility. Okay, um, community involvement, you can see the numbers up there on the screen. Uh, for people that are registered for our youth programs. Um, you see the people that are registered for our adult program, our youth teams and our adult teams. We have, um, where it says membership, that's pickleball, that's tennis. And, um, our membership to use the tennis court and the gym. That's what the membership program is. And that number with the nine thousand nine hundred and forty-three, that's the people that walk through, either walk through the door or participate in the weight room, basketball on a regular basis, coming through our building on a six-week, um, daily program. Um, a lot of people don't realize what we do until they come over and see a program actually operating. And that's, those are the numbers that we came up by keeping track. We have, and the way we keep track is we have people to sign in. If they're gonna use the weight room, they have to sign in, even if they're just walking or they're using the gym. So we track those numbers, um, in the system. Okay, we have a senior citizen program that we weren't running, and that's a bingo program on Tuesdays. Um, and then we have an exercise program, but we also run on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And both of those programs, one of them, we charge a five dollar fee. The other one is free because the instructor doesn't charge anything. And that's for both of them for seniors. Okay? And then athletic programs that we offer for the youth, uh, it's ten of those. We offer summer camps, it's thirteen of those. And then the programs we offer for adults are six. All right, staffing, it says is at a premium. We have four, only four full-time employees. I put in our budget for an assistant director this year. And we have eleven active part-time employees. And the, the problem with our part-time employees, they, some of them are seasonal. Volleyball's in, we got, uh, four people that work when volleyball is over. They are not active participant in our program, so they're seasonal employees. So a lot of times we, we'll have to put ads back in the paper to get people, to rehire people to get through our seasons. So that's why I say it's a very important need for us to, um, update our staffing. And a lot of what we do, when it says staffing, you see that bottom line includes serving food. And anybody that serves food for us has to be certified. Okay, we have our rentals where we do equipment. We rent the, um, uh, equipment such as chairs and tables. And we do fields and facilities. And that's all at a cost that was set by you guys. Okay, and one, uh, this is a program that the county is probably most proud of. Christmas mothers, they use our gym. Um, they come in on Tuesday night, they set up and they use it all the way through Friday. Serve a lot of, um, families. And then we do the county Christmas luncheon off, we conduct that for the county in our building. Okay, recent accomplishments. Okay, you can see a running video here of stuff that has been done, uh, based on what you guys provided for us monetarily. Having us, um, bring things up to our park. Uh, we got, as you can see, we got new scoreboards in those places at top. Uh, Darrell them did a great job with putting the bleachers and the concrete pads in. Uh, the War, War, War and More building, if you look at some of those slides, you'll, you'll see some of the stuff that was done there. Bleachers, basketball goals, courts. We got, um, 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 new padding for the walls, uh, our curtains. So we could actually have more space so multiple teams could practice at the same time. The kitchen was renovated about four years ago and that has been a lifesaver. Prior to that, they told us that we couldn't boil water legally. That's what the health department told us. So, so when they, when Darrell them renovated that kitchen, that it has been nothing but a blessing. So, uh, and then we have a cafe that now, because we do serve food, people can sit down and actually eat there. So all that has been a blessing to us and people appreciate the fact. As you can see, you see the videos before and now you see the videos after. And a lot of this work, a lot of money was saved because Darrell and his staff did some of the work.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? All right, it says what's next for our department? Okay, current, in our current CIP, we're requesting the completion of our scoreboard projects. The field right here in the bottom and the one behind the library and a couple of that don't have scoreboards. So we're trying to add scoreboards to those. Uh, requests from, from the public. Um, outdoors fitness facilities, we have several groups. And I'm sure you all have seen them. They come out, they exercise at nighttime. If you are up here Friday, they were out in the dark exercising. So they, they've asked for outdoor exercising station. People, people are asked for dog parks and walk-in spaces. One of the things that I, uh, do know that requires land. And that was one of the requests that I'm putting in, that we have to look into purchasing property in a place where we can expand facilities as far as, um, pickleball courts, volleyball courts and possible basketball courts. The biggest thing that we're looking at with the renovations is possible upgrades at the gym and at the, uh, field. And that involves handicap accessibility, uh, cameras and security far as, because we've had people to break into stuff. And when, when we upgrade the facilities and put that type of stuff in, it will cut down on the, um, the, the criminal activity that takes place. And it would help us, you guys gave us some money a couple of years back for security. It would help us with not having to call the sheriff department every, every time something break out. Cause we can go to the cameras and then the sheriff can take over from there. So the cameras would be a great addition if we could get those. All right? And you see on there, and that's part of our upgrade this year with the batting cages, um, uh, and the scoreboard for, uh, the, uh, Millie County Elementary School. Okay. War and More building, great upgrades been done. You saw the video running with the things that have been taking place. Um, the doors need to be handicapped accessibility. We're getting now, grand parents come. The facilities are great, we got places for them to sit. But now's a challenge for them to get in the door. The door swings open, doesn't have automatic opening. So they got a backup, somebody gotta get the door. And then they come in, if you got the button where you, where you push, they are able to access this building without any, um, restraints. So that's just one of the things. And we talked to Darrell about it and, and he said, hey, you put it in the budget and they get, get a look at. And if we get an opportunity to upgrade it, we will. So, um, those are the type of things, we ask for storage space. The gym, I mean, it's get, pretty much get to use seven days a week. Uh, there's a possible, small possibility, I know we can't go out toward the, you, the building next door, but we can go along the side. So we're looking at possibly doing an upgrade where we could add some space to the weight room for storage and possibly expand the weight room. The weight room has become one of our most popular programs. And one of the reasons it is, the, um, physical therapy people, once they turn their people loose and they still need additional physical therapy, all the machines that they have, we have. So they come to us for rehab and they use the facilities. And we have a policy in place right now that if you're fifty-five and older, you can use the facilities free. So when that gets out there and people know it's free, it is well-used. You saw the numbers early that I put up about the, uh, nine thousand people. That's included in that, um, weight room where people come in and use it. Okay? Our office, there's a couple of things that you really need to stress. In our office, we don't have he, heat in the front office. We don't have heat in the, um, bathroom. Women's or the men, and we don't have heat in the, um, in the hallway. Uh, spoke with Darrell, we put a request in the current budget to upgrade that so that it can be taken care of. At first, the initial request was six thousand dollars. And then I told Darrell what we needed, uh, to actually make it work. He said that request should be more like twenty. And it's, and if you can't, when it got cold, you didn't want to go in those bathrooms. That's how cold it's getting.
It's just always been, it's just never, that building's just never had it for those. It's not a failure of it, it just never was.
Well, well, what it did have, it had the baseball, baseball heat and it was removed. And when they upgraded all the baseball heat, because they totally renovated the inside and changed some, which was storage, and they changed it to bathrooms and no baseball, no heat was added when it was done.
Okay.
And I'll share this with you all, our office equipment is some of the stuff that's been in it since I started the job. I've been there twenty-seven years, so it's time for us to get some new office furniture. There's not gonna be, I, we're not going to the high-end stores, we just need to replace some of the stuff that's there. It's just one of those basic things that I think needs to be done. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, challenges, a couple of things here. Um, I just shared with you the gym space. We have seventeen, uh, adult volleyball women teams. We have seventeen youth teams. Well, you can do the numbers, we got four gyms. So every night we're, we're mixing and matching, trying to cover the space so they can practice. They play on Sunday, the women play on Sunday, the girls play on Saturday. This past Saturday, um, I walked out the building at eight o'clock. I got there at nine because they played all day. At the high school, they walked out at eight o'clock. It's just, it's ju, and, and they had a funeral, they, I, the high school actually, I was used to building in conjunction with the funeral because we didn't want to move it. So additional space in a facility is definitely needed. And as we speak of facilities, we also talked about maybe a possible park. And you can see the complex, it's part of our plan. I think we need to get to that point where we're looking at purchasing, uh, property for a complex. I brought this up twenty years ago because I saw what other people were doing. Power Tank and people around us in Gooseland. So I put it in and they didn't feel, feel like it was a good idea. Here's what I suggested, and now I know we, we may be going to this. I suggested then, and I'm suggesting now, if we put money to the side to water project that may be, uh, considered in the future, I'm telling you, that's how you get projects going. Because if you can't do the whole project, you can do part of it. And that's why I feel like the direction that we need to move in. And if we, even if it were considered land, the owner might hold it for you if you're gonna have something to put down on and say, hey, two years from now, we can purchase this. But when I can, when I made that recommendation, it was shot down. So now we're in a situation where the prices is going up and we don't have the property to do anything with. So I'm just saying, that's one of the biggest considerations. The lack, the, uh, the staffing initiative, in my, um, budget, I asked for one full-time person. And that'd be assistant director. And I want, I, I already stated that we got four full-time people now. And I'm also putting a plan in place because as Darrell said earlier about his retirement, mine is not tomorrow, but it's close.
Yeah.
I'll just leave it at that. And what I want to see is when somebody step into that gym, they see the same consistency that they get now, they'll get it then. So I put that in budget, it may not get approved this year, but it needs to be considered and considered version. And the last thing I want to see, this is just a note for you guys. This been, um, battered around a little bit. And actually, people came to me and asked me what I thought several years back, and that's the Hendersonville. Uh, as you can see, um, Jay Grows was the head of that project, he's sitting in a room just for support. But here's what I want to put out to you. This was brought to me several years back. To me, they brought it to me and said, hey, what could you do with this building if we renovate it? And we have to turn down requests for birthday parties, for anniversaries, for exercise classes. Um, I believe it's, uh, eight rooms over there. You could, though, for some of the size of the parties, uh, you could use that building for them. My suggestion, if we're looking at that building instead of keeps pushing it, as they say, kicking the can down the road, I suggest that you put some money to the side. And then if Jay can renov, uh, resurrect the project, we can look at people making donations to getting it going and see where we need to be as a final number to maybe renovate that building. And the longer you wait, because I remember when they waited on this building and that building next door. I was around when they started it, they kept putting it off. And finally, they, they did it and it cost double. It's gonna be no different with the Hendersonville.
Yeah.
So either we're gonna, either we're gonna invest in it or either we need to take it out. Because to me, it's part of Amelia history. My personal opinion, well, the way I feel, we need to do something with it. And if it came under Parks and Rec, it could be another rental space, you could charge for it. You may not get the money that you put into it, but what I do know, and this is talking to Jay and some people that I've heard, the people in Amelia County are willing to put up some, some money to help get this thing started. So if that's the case, even if we don't get anything off the ground, at least put it on your radar. I say, okay, maybe we'll put fifty thousand dollars aside for if this project does get them started and you have something to move forward with. Um, I just want to add that because, you know, they haven't sit there and not do anything, the more the cost going, we're going to incur when we get to the end. All right, as you can see, that completes my presentation. And now, if you got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
Did I see that number right then? Over nine, almost ten thousand people come through there in six-week program?
Six-week program. And I, I'm talking, if you think about it, I, this, this is a small example, what a seventeen teams in women volleyball on Sunday. We had seventeen youth teams on Saturday. Okay, and when one group leave out, the next group comes in. And then, and we got eleven or twelve basketball teams. So when the volleyball teams are not there, the basketball teams, right out the door, one in, one out. I'm telling you, the building gets used seven days a week.
People have to go to seven people a day.
It's, it's a good thing. It's a, it's a, it's a good thing, but the space now is, it's almost not, people call for, believe it or not, one of you, lady called the other day, want to use for a funeral. Repass for a funeral, I, we had to turn her down because it was already booked.
Yeah.
And our activities come first, so we don't, unless we can rearrange, our activities will always come first. But it's a good thing, it's a good thing, because that means that people in Amelia are taking advantage of the resources that we'll provide. And that mean that you guys have given them the opportunity to have that. But now it's expanding to the point where we have to look at maybe something a little bit different.
I'm sorry, couldn't make it on there. Sorry, I was late. Um, could the upstairs, could you, is it big enough for like pit stop ports?
I don't know, that, that would be a Darrell question. I can't, I can't answer that awful.
I don't know the size of it or nothing.
I don't think you could do it structurally.
Yeah.
The walls are way burned.
What all could you, what all could you put, you use in that?
Okay, I, I've had requests for art classes. I've had requests for small birthday parties. You, tho, those rooms would be perfect for that. And if you had a million there, you could put displays in there. And, and it would get used, I knew it would get used. We, we had a guy, when they first started talking about it, and Jay, if you really wanted to speak with him, I know this is my time.
Take in mind, there was a study completed that had all the ideas and suggestions too, yeah.
Was it two, three or two, two, the cost, Megan?
Yeah, I think it was four.
Four million?
Yeah.
I thought it was two something.
But I.
There's a study out there, it's on the website.
Yeah.
So it's available to look at. If I may have a moment, I would say, you know, Glenn called me a couple of weeks ago, he asked me about the Hendersonville building. Last November, the first weekend last November, we're on the car show, my church was right across the street here. And one six-year-old, six-year-old girl in my church said, hey, will you show me what the inside? And one six-year-old, six-year-old girl in my church said, hey, will you show me what the inside of that building looks like? I guess she'd been driving by with her family, seeing it, wondering, so I said, yeah, I can show you that. So I came overnight, I opened the, the building up to take her in, so she could see it. And as I walked her in there, I heard something and I looked and there's twenty people coming through the door to see what the building looked like. And I very quickly said, you know, it's not a public building, you know, give them a little safety, there's asbestos, you're in here at your own risk. Uh, I wouldn't really open this up for everybody to see. But they came in, they walked all through the building, they asked me a bunch of questions, they, people age ranged from their twenties to their seventies. Interested in the building, asking why the county hadn't done something with it, what, what the status was, what it was used for. Some of them were folks that had moved here, some of them folks that lived here for a long time. The twenty-year-olds were people that grew up here and said, I'd always wondered about the inside of this building. Um, so that was, that was last, first weekend last November. Since then, I would say every three to four weeks, somebody has asked me about the Hennepin Building. Without, without me initiating those conversations. So I just say that to say, there is interest out there in the community. Um, before Glenn called me, I thought, man, maybe it is time for me to try to get the committee back together and start talking about it and figure out what's going on. And then I got a call from Glenn, which confirmed to me, it is time to see what the interest is in the community. And um, so I just share that with you all, because that's what I've experienced over the last two or three months.
Hey, I wanna, I wanna close with this, first of all, I wanna thank you guys for giving me an opportunity to be here. And we shared with you what we do, but um. When, when you have something like that in the community, and I know money is tight. So, I mean, that'd be the la, one of the last things to give, but if you consider just a small portion of money put aside, and then. Maybe his committee can say, hey, let's, let's do some fundraising. I've suggested this to the schools, I'm gonna be honest with you, with the complex they want. Because there, there are people that want to see a football field built. They want to see a baseball field built, because they wanna separate the facilities. I've suggested to the school, but I'm telling you, when you take the opportunity to engage people, people will be engaged if it's a project that they want to see happen. And I know, and I've shared this with David, David is my contact, he does a great job of talking to us about Paxton Rec. I think things can happen with the Hennepin Building and with the football and baseball field, if we engage it the right way. I do.
I think the park, the, behind the library is a great exam, great example of that, that was primarily funded through private donations.
There you go.
Yep, once the library got that going last.
And I shared this with David, and I'll share it with you all. I, I don't put my name on much, cuz people ask you to do, if they think you, you're one of those people, they'll say, come and, no. But with stuff that I wanna see happen, I'll put my name on, and those two things that I'm willing to work to see, make you see it happen. Um, and like I said, I wanna thank y'all for your time, if you got any more questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, it was always fun.
Thank y'all so much, appreciate your time, all right.
Thank you, Jay, for your input, all right.
Sure, I have to do it anytime.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Well, uh, I'm sitting in for Brian, he is out sick today. Do I get started or wait for him to come back?
You can find, go ahead.
Okay, so for animal control. As far as facts and statistics from twenty twenty-four, uh, we did intake on three hundred and sixty-one animals. And we were limited to using only six kennel spots instead of the twelve that we have available technically, the way it's designed. Um, it is twelve runs with a guillotine, but it's only, we're only supposed to have it, it one side in use, so that, um. So that they stay dry, that's the big thing, that's, that's why we've been getting, you know, violations in the past for the floor being dry and the dog's feet getting wet, they get uh pododermatitis. So that's been kind of a big deal, it's hard to keep it dry. Um, there have been times that we've had to use more than six, um, quite a few times, actually. Um, as far as the numbers go, we took in two hundred and fifty dogs. That's really out of, yeah, so a hundred and twenty-nine of them were strays, fifty-eight were owner surrenders, twenty-nine were seized. And five were transferred in from other shelters. Uh, we do work with other um. Local shelters, like they, they help us out if we have to move some dogs out in case of an emergency, or they have to move stuff out in case of emergency, we do help them. Um, we took in a hundred and eight cats, forty of them were strays, forty-seven were surrenders, and nine were seized. Um, other animals, I believe that was a bearded dragon. Um, we did have one horse and one rooster that was left over after the county fair. Um, I.
They left it?
I, they left a rooster and I had to chase it in the barn. It was.
One way to get rid of a rooster.
With, with, with Kelly.
I've never thought about that.
Yeah, we posted it up, we, I, we tried to figure out who it belonged to, nobody claimed him. So, I mean, he was, he was pretty.
Now, if it was a hen, it'd be okay.
Yeah, it was a hen, it was something for chucking gold nowadays.
Yeah, so people would have been fighting to adopt that one. So, out of all of those animals, uh, forty dogs were returned to owner, three cats were returned to owner. The bearded dragon was also returned to owner.
Oh, good.
Yes, wow, sort of, I guess. Sorry, uh, I'm not sorry. Um. Um, ninety-four dogs were adopted, seventy-seven cats, the horse was adopted, and the stray rooster was also adopted. We uh transferred seventy-two dogs to in-state rescues and thirteen cats.
Chicken, what a tough team.
Oh, no, he was too pretty to be eaten. Um, we transferred fifteen dogs out of state. Four dogs and six cats died in the shelter, they were mainly puppies and kittens. Um, it's kind of to be expected, unfortunately. And we euthanized seven dogs and three cats, the majority of the dogs were dangerous. Um, and then the cats were sick. And then as of January first, twenty twenty-four, we had thirty-eight animals in the shelter. All right, so our recent accomplishments. The Best Friend Animal Society's No Kill Shelter Award, for the second year in a row, uh, we've been no kill for eight years total. I mean, it's one of the reasons we have a surrender list, we have a stray list, uh, we do our best to not euthanize for space. Um, that would not go well with the public at all. Um, hired our third ACO. Yay. Um, March twenty twenty-four, we are tight knit, uh, tight knit staff. Um, we work really well together, we're a very strong team. We've improved our standing with V DAX, in our last inspection in December, we had no violations. So we've been working hard to keep those floors dry. Um, we've really grown our social media following. Um, we've increased our like Facebook followers, for example, by at least a thousand people. Um, and that helps with donations, we've gotten several donations just kind of out of the blue, just because. One, for example, we shared a dog that was missing, some people had visited here from um, like Hampton Roads area. Dog went missing, we posted it up on Facebook to help find her, and they sent us a check for a thousand dollars, just, or a family member dead. Just because we helped in, you know, finding her. Um, it also helps with return to owners and adoptions, so we've actually started keeping track. We just started maybe a week ago, keeping track of the adoptions, like how did you hear, you know, like where did you see this dog, where'd you, well, we don't have cats, so where did you see this dog? Um, you know, was it word of mouth, was it Facebook, you know? So, cuz we, we do get a lot of adoptions through Facebook, um, and a lot of the owners in the county follow our Facebook page. Uh, we're also pretty heavily involved in the lost and found animal page, it's on Facebook. So we spend a lot of time kind of perusing that every day to make, you know, to look for dogs that we recognize, our frequent flyers. Or dogs that we may have picked up recently that are reported missing. Um, we're really working on networking with more rescues within our state and also out of state. Uh, the r- rescues nationwide are inundated, it's, it's pretty bad right now for rescue, everybody is full. Um, and a lot of jurisdictions are euthanizing left or right, and they're using that, like Prince Edward, for example, they're euthanizing nine dogs a week. So, which is, is pretty bad. Um, now Utah Beagle Rescue is a new one that we've partnered with, uh, Dexter knows about them.
Yeah.
Sorry. And uh, yeah. Um, but they have, we have sent three beagles to them. Yes, three beagles, uh, two were by car, we had thirty-one um different transporters who would drive approximately an hour and a half. One way, you know, towards Utah and do a handoff. It took a lot to get it coordinated, um, but they always made it to Utah and um, they're a really, really good rescue. The last time uh we flew a little beagle named Billy out to Utah with American Airlines, um, using their cargo. So, yeah, and we're, we're still trying to reach out to rescues up north, because they really like hound dogs, there's not, they don't hunt with dogs up there. So they love hunting, or well, hound dogs. Um.
I would not have guessed that.
Yeah, they, they have nothing but pits up north, so they get a hound up there, they, it's gone immediately, it's adopted. And we actually were talking to another rescue in, I wanna say it's Kansas City. Because they, the particular town that they live in, pit bulls are banned, like they're a banned breed, so any dog that comes in, they DNA test it. And if it has any pit bull in it at all, it is illegal to have within the town limits. And they're not allowed to adopt out the county surrounding them, so we're actually talking to them about doing a swap. Because we have nothing but hounds right now, and we might swap hounds for pits. So, because there, we adopted fast and we actually moved pit bulls a lot faster than we moved beagles, I mean, not beagles, hounds, so. Um, and we're still kind of, we're still in the discussion phase about that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Go to the annex, I mean, what's that? It's big and better, all the way across.
Yeah, I just looked at that.
Not a good account for that. Um, so, in August of twenty twenty-four, uh, we did perform a very large seizure of hounds. There were nineteen dogs total. Uh, three were deceased. And uh, that filled up, it was actually right after I'd spoken to you, it filled up our shelter in one go. And that's one of the examples where we started, we called Cumberland Animal Control and Powhatan Animal Control. And we, hey, we need help, like can you take some of these dogs off our hands? And they immediately came in and grabbed some of the dogs and so that we could have more room for these uh hounds. And we had to double them up, we had dogs in crates, we had to get the cats out of there, so we had to put dogs in the cat room, I mean, there were, there were just hounds everywhere. So, and that is still um pending trial, cuz we did uh press criminal charges. And as far as um other accomplishments, volunteers and donations, again, they've been kind of rolling in, we've got a lot of new volunteers of all ages. Um, and then donations, as monetary donations have been great, and then we've also had to ask for food, calorie supplement, you name it, for emaciated dogs. Especially for like frontline, we've had a lot of lice this year, randomly, it's kind of gross, but uh. The, the public has been very helpful in getting animals treated, so.
Should've saved a chicken.
I know, I know. I did put them up there, though.
Record.
I named them Justin Rooster Lake.
Record.
It's fine, everything's fine. Uh, all right, what is next for our department? We need a new shelter, it's not a want, like we have to have a new shelter. Um, with V DAX, and we did, we did do well on our last inspection, but that can change, I mean, she came in when it was dry. Outside was dry, which means the inside's dry, if she'd come in after the insane amount of rain we had a couple of weeks ago, we were struggling to get it dry. I mean, we use a squeegee, we've used, we have a leaf blower. Huh? Dehumidifier, we used, I mean, towels to hand, we'll hand dry it, and then we've got floor dryers that have been donated. But, I mean, it, when it's wet outside, it is, it's bad in the shelter. Um, we also, we really need more space. Especially, you know, right now, I think y'all know what we have in our cat room. And we need more room, I mean, we can't take in any cats, um, we're gonna have these, those little creatures until April fifteenth at the earliest. Like, we have to hold them for probably forty days after that. So I've already, I've already spoken to other rescues, we're out for kitten season, we're not gonna be able to help the public at all. Because we can't have cats in there, because the temperature's too high, it's currently at eighty-six. Um.
Give me some barn cats.
Cats ain't the problem out there, buddy. David's favorite thing for the problem. Like. I wasn't wanting to go in there off the border, that part.
Yeah, he's been, yeah. Yeah.
We just got a bunch, I think we got seven or eight the other day.
Did you really?
Yeah, we need.
Wasn't me. It wasn't me.
You know what any boss raised, have they raised any money for the shelter? You know?
So we're working on that, I don't, I don't have numbers, Brian told me today that I was doing this, so, yeah. I was busy this morning, so I didn't have.
I was asked about that last week and I didn't have an answer.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'll see if I can figure something out. Uh, let's see, so space, also, I mean, just with what we have going on in there right now, like I've had to plug in a bunch of heaters. And I have tripped a lot of breakers on Friday, it was like, we can't use our microwave right now. Or we'll shut down half the building by accident. Um, and as far as service goes, we need a, a newer, bigger shelter so we can better serve the community. I mean, we're getting calls left and right, we have one lady who's losing her mind because there's three stray dogs that just won't leave her house. And if we go pick them up, I mean, we're gonna have to euthanize three to make room for them. And we've got fosters all over the county. Um, you know, back before the first, the ice storm, we were going around snatching up every stray we can get our hands on, you know, that people were concerned about, especially ones that are emaciated. Like, we can't say no to picking up dogs that will not survive those kinds of temperatures. And we were just kind of stuffing them with whatever foster we could find. Um, and then as far as cost goes, I mean. Trying to continue to renovate or fix things that break in the current shelter, it's, I mean. In the long run, it'll be more cost effective if we have a newer shelter. I mean, between the gas, the electricity, all of it, I mean, the floors already need to be repainted. You know, which means we have to empty out the shelter, but um. As far as education goes, we are constantly trying to educate the public. Um, we tried to do some like classes once a month last year, they weren't terribly popular, but, I mean, it's new. So, but we are using Facebook a lot as public outreach to try to educate people about the laws. We have a lot of people here in the county, they move out here, they have no idea there's no leash law. Um, so we spend a lot of time educating new citizens that, hey, there's only certain parts of the county that have a leash law. It blows their minds, but I, you know, it is what it is, like, you live in the country, there's no leash law. Um, and then we're, you know, we're also, we're still educating them about, you know, animal husbandry, medications, heartworm disease, fleas, ticks, you name it. Like that, it is a constant thing, we're always um educating. And as far as staff goes, uh, you know, we're, we deal with new animals all the time. So there's, is, there's always learning to be done on our end as well, especially keeping up with new laws that are coming down the pike. Okay, uh, opportunities, oh, the animal control conference, I believe that Brian would like to send two of us. I don't, I think it's gonna be him and Sarah going to the animal control conference this year, fingers crossed. Um, there's a lot of seminars, grants, I've, I need to sit down and uh see if I can find more grants. A lot of them, when it comes to animals, they're only five oh one C three grants, um, like I found one. And I believe that we qualified for it, but it's APAL, that's gonna, it's APAL who actually qualifies for it, so I'm gonna work.
It's a nonprofit.
Right, um, and, but I'm, so I'm gonna, I worked with Scarlett to get her the information so that she could apply for it. To see if we could, you know, it's not. To get her the information so that she could apply for it, to see if we could, you know, it's not like a huge grant or anything, but every little bit helps. So, and I know that they've, they set aside, there's like the shelter fund, like with APAW and then the shelter fund with the treasurer. So that, you know, we're really starting to raise money for new shelter. Um, fundraising, um, so Sarah has started, there is a uh. Printify shop, we can make, you know, she's got some like t-shirts and stickers and all kinds of stuff that people can purchase of calendar. That has animals that were chosen by a, a board of volunteers to be featured on the calendar. Um, so she's constantly coming up with new ways to raise money for the new shelter. And challenges and kind of the things, and space, building condition, you know, we struggle with, I'm making it work, but it's, it's, it takes a lot of time. Um, vehicles. We have two hand-me-downs from the sheriff's office, and then the white truck, the big work truck, which. That thing sounds like it's just gonna fall apart. Um, so, and it's not. It's not very, the, we're having issues with like the air in it and whatnot, it's been worked on a few times, so I mean, it, it runs and it gets the job done, but. Um, at some point, we, we are gonna need newer vehicles, especially ones that uh. Make it easier for us to transport dogs, like the white truck, I had to go out and pick up a ninety-pound Great Dane pit bull mix. In the snow the other night after he'd bitten a kid in the face and sent him to the hospital. And, I mean, I can lift ninety pounds, but it, we didn't know, it was a call from the sheriff's office, and we didn't know if he was gonna be vicious or not. So Brian had to go with me, and we used, we actually used his Explorer because getting a dog that size. Up into the white box truck is just, it not happening. It's not, it does not work well, so.
Is it box on the back of that truck, is it air conditioned, does it have to have ventilation or something? And I always heard there's some stupid rule about that.
Yes, so each um, each box has its own little vent. Now, whether it works, that's up to the truck. It, it says it's supposed to be working, I usually kinda check beforehand. Um, a previous ACO uh. Actually melted one of the vents and sealed it off, I'm not sure why, but, so that truck is actually down a box and has been for twelve years. So, um. Yeah, I mean, it gets it, like if I have to pick up litters of puppies and whatnot, it's fine, but when it comes to large dogs or. Goats and pot-bellied pigs and all that, it's not a very good vehicle at all. Um, and it's also, it's got some electrical stuff going on. Um, and then our trailer actually, the horse trailer that APAW bought us years ago. It needs some serious work, we haven't really addressed it yet, but the, the ramp that comes down is rusted. And, cause when we picked up a horse after someone had passed away, when she was going up on it, it, uh, we thought she was gonna go through it. So, that's gonna have to be addressed as well.
Really, you need livestock.
We do, we do, like that one, APAW bought us that years ago because I went through, and this is when I was here before. I went through a week where it was nothing but horses and pigs and everything was loose, and I was having to catch them left and right. And relying on people in the community to risk their own equipment, like it, you know, it's a liability. So, um, I mean, a stock trailer would be nice, but what we have, I mean, it works, as long as their trailer broke. So, but basically all it breaks down, I mean, it's money, everything comes back to money, but. Kinda is what it is.
The grants, I'm on CRC board, and that's all they do, and uh, we have discussed this several times. And for some reason, a grant for shelters and animal control is ten times harder to get. Than looking for tadpoles in a creek.
Yep.
The government will give you money for that.
Mm-hmm.
They don't even return your call from what I understand on this, that smart is somebody else to get in touch with.
I've reached out to them before.
And most of them don't give nothing.
Yeah, but I think if we use APAW. Or not use, but like if, if, if it's APAW who's applying for those grants on behalf of the shelter, for the shelter fund specifically. I think that we might be successful with that.
We talked about it last week. Grants for animal shelters, and it's just.
Yeah, one thing uh, that wasn't on here, as far as equipment goes, um, I mean, I've been talking to the sheriff's office because we're, we're now starting to get. Calls regarding like firearms involved with some of these animals, like a little boy shot. A Chihuahua a couple of months ago, killed it, and the sheriff's office ended up taking that call because there was a firearm involved, because, you know, we don't carry. We could, but I, we're, most animal control officers are taught to talk a lot. And uh, so, but uh, I guess Lieutenant Pollock was concerned because we don't have body armor. You know, and when we walk up to houses with nothing, with no backup, we don't have any radios. You know, we're out in the middle of nowhere, and so his concern was, he's like, why are y'all walking up to houses with no body armor?
You don't have radios?
You haven't got your new radio yet?
No.
You don't have a gun? No, back in the seventies, my brother-in-law was animal control enemy, and I used to ride around on weekends when, we, he had guns.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we're just.
They carry them, I think.
Yeah, yeah. There was also, in the past, there was concern about looking too much like law enforcement if they were carrying. So, but body armor, oh, and body cams would also.
I think those should.
We, no, we, we definitely need them because. Especially, I mean, there is a strong link between child abuse and neglect and animal abuse and neglect. Um, I mean, like, for example, years ago, I went to a house, a dog had frozen to death in his doghouse. And I ended up having to get a search warrant with the sheriff's office and, because there were dogs inside, we could hear them. And it turned into a huge CPS investigation, because there were children that were living in not so good conditions. So we do, there is a, they've actually really started focusing on that link between children and animals and elder, elderly. So.
Picture don't laugh.
No. Neither does smell in some cases, I can tell you that.
You mentioned that, um, you call Palatine, Cumberland, they helped out. On a normal operation without seizures y'all doing, do they call, y'all take animals from other counties to help them out, is it reciprocal?
Oh, yeah, it is, it is. Um, I know, who called us? Cumberland, Cumberland actually called us, it was after the fact, um, they called, they needed help. So we took a couple of dogs from them, and they were gone almost immediately, but um, you know, it's uh. We work really well with Cumberland, Powhatan, um, I mean, I'm friends with the ACOs in Prince Howard, so. Yeah. Question?
Appreciate all you do.
Thank you. You try.
Appreciate you standing in.
Yeah, not a problem, not a problem. I'll, I'll have to, I'll check her pockets before she leaves.
Before he's something else. Snakes.
That was a lizard.
Yeah.
She's already got plans for it, he's gonna.
Yeah, it's a new Cali, New Caledonian giant gecko.
Cats that love to catch up.
Yes.
Don't make sense.
She'd be so heartbroken. Thank you.
Yeah, the, we have the registrar, but we have two departments that have already been presented. Uh, which was community development and building department, and then you receive commissioner revenue and the treasurer. You have copies of those, I mean, we can read them if you wish, or they can stand for themselves.
What time is it? Two after three.
What time, he said what time's the red?
Red, red hours, okay. Right here, he said, the time is.
Sorry, so I didn't want you to keep picking.
Thinking, he's got a phone right there.
Oh, you gotta understand where he's from.
Uh, three, four years on the register.
She presented.
I mean, I'm just gonna show you the slide, I'm not gonna read verbatim, because you have received it prior to, the commissioner revenue did apologize for not being able to be present. As was treasurer, um, but we can just go ahead and get right through it if you haven't read it already. So this is some of the, the facts and stats that she has provided um, in twenty twenty-four. And I didn't know if you guys had asked her any questions or had anything specific, if you do, I can make sure to make a note of it and reach out to her as well. So, I mean, I can read it as well. So, the personal property and real estate, in two thousand sixteen, she, they state that we have assessed thirty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-three items. For a total assessed value of. One billion, four hundred and two million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Twenty twenty-four, it was thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and six items for a total assessed value of. Two billion, four hundred and fifty-two million, six hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Um, she states that there's a seventy-five percent increase, all with the same staffing, and she is correct on that.
No, that's dollar amount increase.
No, oh no, I meant by the staffing wise, that they're kinda like us, they're kinda slim as well. Uh, then it goes on to discuss the business license in two thousand sixteen and twenty twenty-four and the difference in that. She says that there's a ninety-eight percent increase with the same staffing as well. And then the business personal property and the streamery and tools, she gives the numbers and stats for the two thousand sixteen, twenty twenty-four as well. Explaining that there's a three hundred and ninety-two percent increase with the same staffing as well. Also stated is the county, county revenues have increased seventy-seven percent from two thousand sixteen to twenty twenty-four. The office is responsible for assessing nearly three quarters of the total revenue that the county receives. The recent accomplishments that she has stated, now all these slides can already be found on the website for those who view this at home. Their accomplishments, continue to maintain office accreditation, states that this is the first in locality to attain. Will have two certified deputies this year with another on the way, commissioner retains her master certification. She, they have digitized twelve years of assessment information so that they can move eighteen years of records up from the basement. What is next for this department? Continue to provide the highest level of service they can with the resources provided, prioritizing state mandated duties. Items of what will be forgotten when staffing time is limited, no implementation of meal taxed. No county budget projections, GIS management updating, correcting, et cetera, additional duties. She suggests could be for a planner position, and with this being said, um, the building department works in hand in hand. Or they try to work together, kinda help each other out with keeping this information updated, because there has been several. Properties that have come to our attention, and she is correct, with both offices being limited in staffing, it is kinda hard to keep up with all of it. Uh, business activity, business property tracking, auditing reduced, reduction of revenues. Uh, mileage discounts, reduction of taxpayer assistance and satisfaction, so that's kinda what's next for that, for this department. Opportunities and department challenges, she states personal property forms add unnecessary administrative duties. Mail opening, sorting alphabetically, filing, scanning records, retention schedules, searches, searching for forms, et cetera. They're seeking to eliminate this, this process for the third year in a row. Understaffed and under supported is part of the challenges that they face, the state compensation board. Has our full-time employee need at five point seven people this year, this is just for the criteria that they cover in their budget. Most, she has it quoted, most local governments approve additional funding or constitution, for constitutional officers. Then is reflected on the compensation board approved budgets, local governments may approve salary supplements, additional positions and other increased expenses. For the officers, and that's from the Virginia Compensation Board. Currently Amelia County does not fund any position above the state minimum required or even the state recommended for state duties. In two thousand sixteen, the start of her leadership, the state budget has our FTE need at. Um, three point two two people, the increased workload implemented by the commissioner's office has directly affected revenues and staffing need. In upward direction, however, this has not been recognized by the county during budget time. And then she also listed that lack of respect and support from the board supervisors as part of the challenges. Not to know if you guys have reviewed this prior to this meeting and reached out with any questions and had any answers that you can share with the board.
I did review, I didn't have any questions.
Is there anything that you guys needed to take back to the commissioner? Okay. Alright, give me a second.
For reviewing, Ash?
Absolutely, uh, let me switch over to the treasurer's office. Alright, again, both the commissioner revenue and treasurer apologize for not being able to be present in person. Please keep in mind that they are receiving quite a bit of influx of citizens coming in the office to pay taxes or fill out uh, paperwork needed. So, with that being said, now we're gonna discuss the Amelia Treasurer's Office. Facts and stats. She states here that real estate collection rate is of ninety-eight point eight five percent. Personal property collection rate of ninety-four point forty-one percent, delinquent personal property accounts were sent in December to the state. In an effort to collect funds from the state tax refunds and or lottery winnings. Four thousand four hundred and forty-one phone calls were made, or were received May through December twenty twenty-four alone. Recent accomplishments, all employees are certified through the UVA Welding Cooper Center for Public Service. Purchase subscription to aid with returned mail and skip tracing. Increased collection efforts for personal property delinquencies by issuing summons which may create court cases. Office accredited for a third year. What's next for this department? Real estate auction to begin February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five and ending March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. The delinquent collection process began with real estate delinquent notices mailed February tenth, twenty twenty-five, personal property was mailed February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. DMV stop procedure and delinquent accounts to a collection agency will begin April first, twenty twenty-five. Print delinquent names, years and amounts for real estate, personal property and business license as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in the newspaper and online. Let me know if I'm going too fast. Okay, opportunities, department challenges, the opportunity she lists is continue education on multiple BAI modules and other software. And attend annual treasurer's conference. Challenges, like everyone else, staffing, so that's probably one, the one complaint is, we're all working with short staff, but we're making this happen. Any questions?
Definitely a common theme from the two sessions.
It is. And, and you know, and we all understand that, it has to do with budgeting, but it also has to do with the availability for qualified individuals applying to. Um, did you guys have any questions for the treasurer's office? That either you need me to relate to them or that you've already asked and received answers for? Okay. Mr. Monday. Okay, then that's pretty much it. Um, if I receive any input, additional input from them after this meeting. I will go ahead and give it to Mr. Monday for like miscellaneous, miscellaneous reports for tomorrow night, or Wednesday night.
Thank you.
You got twenty minutes before the next, uh, the last one.
We got something to eat that up. Would it be, if y'all mind going into a short closed session and discussing. Personnel, since we're here, we have to amend the agenda to put it on the agenda, just wanna clarify. Just want to clarify. Is that, do you want to do that, Mr. Monday?
Yes, sir. In order to do that, you would need two motions. You would need a motion to add that to the agenda, to amend the agenda and add it to the agenda. And then, once that happens, and then I would read the necessary motions and cite the specific reason and the purpose per for you. And I'm prepared to do that if the first motion passes.
Colonel, I entertain a motion. And then do you want to have a short closed session for personnel?
Oh, I'll take the motion.
Okay, motion. All in, all in. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Awesome.
What was the vote? I'm sorry, I was catching up. Okay, okay. And Mr. Chairman, I will pull it up and read the motion. Give it just a second for my browser to catch up. Internet connection's slow. But we'll get there in just a minute. Now we're in business. All right, Mr. Chairman. In accordance with Virginia Code 2.2-3711, closed meetings authorized for certain limited purposes. There will be two parts to the motion. It would be Section 81. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And it would also be a six. Discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the government unit would be adversely affected. And the more narrow reason for the closed session, Mr. Chairman, would be to discuss the candidate the board is considering hiring for the county administrator's position and a draft employment agreement for the same.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. Can I get a motion soon? Motion for going in closed session per the code. Mr. Monday read. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. We can do it.
Okay, how do I use this?
The arrows to go left and right.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, let me try that again. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you. It's actually a pleasure to be here. I don't get to see you all very often and have a chance to show you a little bit about what's going on in the Registrar's Office and what we're seeing looking ahead and seeing coming up over the next couple of years. And I kind of gather that that's the purpose of this is so that we can do some short-term planning to plan for long-term planning. Okay, I used Ashley's template, which was lovely. Thank you.
Registered voters, we gained a net of 778 voters in the four-year period from 2020 to 2024. Our current total registered voters is 10,613. And we have, for staffing, we have one and a half permanent employees in the office. And then we bring in our team of seasonal workers. Those are officers of election who come in and help us with the early voting, packing the kits to go to the polls, all that sort of thing. And then we have about 40 active officers of election, so that we can spread them around amongst the precincts and not overtax anyone. It's a very long day. They arrive at five, they get to leave at eight or nine when they finally get everything done. And then the chiefs have to come back to the office to return equipment. The electorator board checks everything in so that we know we've gotten back what we sent out. So it's a long day. Okay. Recent accomplishments. Last year, meaning calendar '24, up to through January of this year. You can see it's quite a list. It's not, it was not a normal year in any stretch of the imagination. It was normal for the March dual presidential primary, and then the June dual primary for the congressional district. But then...
She, the page didn't work up. There's everything else.
Yeah. Thank you. Let's see, okay, so the March duel, the June duel, and then we got to do a recount of the June duel. Nailed it, right on the money. Not a vote different. Not one. Okay, and then we go on to, we do the November general, which is a presidential. Of course, that's a really big deal all the time. And immediately following that, because it's a November general, we have to do this RLA, which is a risk-limiting audit. And depending on how you get hit by random choice, you may have a little to do, or you may have a lot to do. We hit this lucky small one this year, but we still had to do it, go through the process. And then we had to do a special election for Senate District 5 to fill a vacant seat, so that took up the month of January. And we're now here at mid-February and looking at maybe having a couple months to get some other things done. A recent accomplishment, I added this to the bottom of this page because it is an accomplishment. Last year, I was able to sign up for the Cyber Navigator program, which is a joint project with UVA, George Mason, VCU, for students who are in cybersecurity and so forth, to actually do an internship with localities to help them with their work. At no cost to the locality. It was a paid internship for the student, but paid by the program, not by us. And with their help, I had a team of three young men, very, very helpful. Got a lot of things straightened out and explained to me from IT point, because that's not, that's not me. I didn't hire honestly IT person here. I hired on for the other stuff. But I learned a lot, too, so that was very good. And I was very, very pleased to utilize that service, which was beneficial to the county and didn't cost us anything. So that was, I felt was, was quite good. I guess you could say other accomplishments would be, you know, getting through another general election with thousands of early voters. Okay, what's next? Coming up in June would be our normal June. This will be a dual primary, because this is the governor's year this year. So we'll have governor, lieutenant governor, attorney general. The entire House of Delegates turns over this year. And in our case, local districts two and five for Board of Supervisors and for School Board. Those will all be on the ballot. Then we have the, after the primary, we'll have the general election in November. And then we will have to really dig into budget planning for EAC, which is the Election Assistance Commission's security standards. There are new commu- security standards. I spoke to our guy at ELEC this afternoon, and his sense is that within the next year or two is when we will start having to comply with the latest, greatest security standards, which could very well mean that we're gonna have to buy new equipment, which could very well mean $125 some odd thousand dollars to replace everything. We can keep our fingers crossed. I spoke to one of our vendors who said that the one machine, which is our ballot tabulators, the big black boxes, actually looked to be in pretty good shape for the initial absolute requirements on the new security standards, so we might not have to spend that much quite that quickly. It will all depend on what the EAC has to say. They're the ultimate authority on, you must do this when. Okay. Opportunities and challenges. Opportunities are, we all continue to take advantage of any and all training opportunities, seminars, webinars, what have you. We have, as you can see, multiple functions in the office. We do take care of the voter registration, the elections, and less is the locality election security standards. And it's our responsibility to make sure that that's dealt with. Our challenges, pretty much like everyone else's, staffing for the office and for the polls. I included both of those for the reason that the General Assembly budget has changed the minimum wage. If that is signed into law by the governor, which it may or may not be, he vetoed it last year, that's gonna affect all of us in the county, because we'll have to be looking at our wages for our employees. My poll workers get the same $13 an hour that the regular employees within Amelia get, but if that goes up, or when that goes up to $15 an hour, they're all gonna have to get $15 an hour. Not just my poll workers, but everybody in the county. So the staffing covers kind of payroll, and do we have enough people in the places that we need them? In the office right now, no. On a busy, early voting day, yeah, we're sitting in each other's laps trying to get things done. That's the space problem. And y'all know about it. I kinda hate to keep mentioning it, but I just, I have to. It's such a problem. I appreciate that you are trying to do something. Please keep it moving.
In addition to sitting on top of each other, we sit in front of the bathroom.
Where we have meetings?
We're constantly interrupted.
Yeah.
Because we sit in front of the bathroom in all the...
And we've got us a little hallway, and we sit in that, and that's right in front of the bathrooms.
And the office trash can.
Yeah. Exactly. Yeah. And it's not just us, because our meetings are all open, so the public can come, too. So the public's sitting in there getting interrupted and sitting in front of a trash can outside the bathroom. That's really not a great picture.
And we're next to the probation office, too, so there's that traffic that comes in. We actually had somebody on probation come in and for our office thinking we were the probation office.
Right.
So, you know, so there's a little security... You know, like, not very private privacy issue there, too.
So that gets us into the office space and the secure storage. And we absolutely must have secure storage. We've got some things that we need to do to finish actually meeting the LES requirements. For example, they would really like us to have a keypad lock on our doors like county admin has, instead of just a standard thumb key. So we're gonna need to, but I've got a little bit of money in the budget left this year. I think I can get that done on this year's, but there's some things like that that we will have to address. Another thing they really want us to have is cameras on the doors going into our storeroom and/or logs for logging in and out people, so that we can keep a chain of custody and access going, know what's going on. So if something happens, we have a record of who was in and out when. So that's something else that we will need to be working on as well. Okay, I sort of mentioned the updated voting, voting equipment. That's, you know, looking ahead to that coming up in a year or two. And then this year, after the January election in particular, I had a couple of my chief officers say, can we please get new booths? They're falling apart. And when you get someone in there who's not steady on their feet, and they go to lean on that rickety booth, they're gonna go down. The booth is gonna down, go down, and somebody's gonna get hurt. So we need to spend some money and replace those booths.
Did you put it in your budget?
They could, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. Um. So that's that. Unfortunately, those, you know, it's, it's all about money. Any further questions?
All of everything.
Yes. Good and bad.
All right.
Can I say something with my representative here? Dexter? No, you can be supported. You know where our parking situation is? If you can see anywhere with your eyes and your knowledge, anywhere we can improve that, because we've been complaining about that parking all the time. Not talking about the neighborhood, just talking about the parking.
I have said something in the past, and...
Just keep it on your radar.
Didn't get nothing else done, but it's a tough spot there to get more parking.
Yes.
Radar, that's our mask.
Yeah, don't worry. I hadn't forgotten, you park behind the building or beside it?
Well, actually, kind of like, if you look at, if you're in front of the buildings to the left, because you're back up to the church. So you might have to maybe travel a little, whatever, but Dexter probably has a better idea than that is.
Where all the police park?
Pardon?
Where all the police in the building park?
The police?
Employees. You're talking about the...
The fire department.
Oh, he's with the family.
District two fire department.
Here's the handle.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Same like, you know.
We have a yard here and a little bit of a yard there, and it's downhill here for the gridlock.
Oh, yeah, no, no, that's a...
You know.
Fire station.
That's, that's the most awkward one of all of them.
Yeah, that's the worst one of all of them.
I mean, it's really congested, and if you don't keep turning on fast, you gotta gridlock.
Exactly. I was probably in an accident yet.
Yes. I know.
So keep that on your radar, thank you.
Still waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's, that's, that's all we ask.
Any more for today?
No, sir.
I believe we were the last round.
Say the best for last.
Yeah, thank you.
The one that I can't open.
Thank you.
Is Board of Supervisors. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not highlighted.
I noticed that.
Right, so like...
People are training.
Yeah.
The library.
They keep saying they're changing the membership.
They keep saying they're changing this membership.
Yes. Right.
Okay.
Right. That is perfect.
Well, they usually recommend anyhow.
They do.
Yeah.
Yep. Because the last one I received was Kelly, Kelly Walker. But we'll talk about that. That's for Wednesday night meeting.
Some of these are on this, you know, to meet, right?
We're not talking about it now.
It's not on the agenda to discuss.
Oh, okay.
That's just, it's already available online, but it's just for Wednesday night meeting.
Yeah, no, it's good. I like the consolidated view. I appreciate, yeah, that's nice.
All right. Anybody else have anything to say? I would, I will say, that's the second time we've heard cameras, keypad locks and stuff. Look at during the budget, the recordings, and thought the county attorney would need them, or something, you know, some prizes on, so we know what we're talking about when we get the budget.
And that's not a killer cost. You know, it's a cheap fix.
It is.
I agree with you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if nobody else has anything.
I'll wait.
All in favor, raise your hand. Right?
See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.